Ready? Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Nahat Board of Selectment meeting for May 18th, 2017. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. Two flag. And two Republican. What's your stance? One nation, one God, and the principle of liberty, justice, and for all.
Okay. This is kind of nice. Opening comments. Mr. Vice Chairman, Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Taylor, I have no comments.
Okay. Mr. Lombard?
Mosted.
Mosted, okay. Okay, next on the agenda would be to approve the minutes. I will entertain a motion that we approve the minutes of 5:417.
I move the Board of Selectmen approve the minutes 5:417.
Second.
There's an awful lot of stuff missing out of these, Jeff. I don't want to approve them right tonight.
Okay.
Okay? Is that okay?
Sure.
All right. So, we're going to skip that one. So, it'll be a no.
Are you saying, are you saying all the minutes?
Yeah, I don't, well...
He's got the, just the May 4th meeting being approved.
This is May 4th only.
May 4th, yeah.
May 4th, oh, okay. So, wait a minute now.
Well, that's the only seven...
It wasn't the last meeting.
Yeah, that was the last meeting.
The last meeting. No, there's some stuff missing out of it, if that's the only one there was, yeah. So, I think we need to just go over them, is that okay? We approve them at the next meeting?
Sure. Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right.
Let's draw the motion.
Motion's been withdrew. Okay, now, we're going to, at the point of the meeting with Citizens Forum, where anybody can get up and speak if they wish. The only thing I'm going to ask is, I've been getting a lot of complaints, if you're going to get up and speak, you have to get up to that microphone and you have to talk over the microphone because nobody can hear you on TV. So, I would appreciate it if anybody wants to get up, this is the time to do it.
And unfortunately, give your name.
Yeah, okay.
As if nobody knows, but that's what people are asking out there.
Okay, I guess nobody wants to get up. Okay, ongoing business. The Harbor Master is recognizing two volunteers. Rob?
Gentlemen, I regret to tell you that I have accepted the resignation of Roz and Andy Puleo as Assistant Harbor Masters. Roz and Andy have been with the Harbor Masters Department for well over 20 years. I believe they were first appointed by Police Chief and Harbor Master William Waters. Roz and Andy have been our, probably our most steadfast Harbor Masters throughout that time period. They are our first and currently our only certified Massachusetts Harbor Masters, and they remain very active in the North Shore Harbor Masters Association. They consistently volunteered to assume the duties of patrolling our waters during the evening of each Fourth of July celebration, which some might consider a front row seat to the fireworks, but it also comes with a great deal of responsibility when you're out there with a number of boaters late at night. So, you will be very missed in that capacity, and many others as well. Roz and Andy, no town, no community can be successful without dedicated and loyal citizens like yourselves. You will be tremendously missed down in Harbor Masters Department, and I hope that you will come and join us for a ride now and then in your retirement. I know you have other responsibilities you want to focus your time on, and I applaud you for that, and congratulate you on your very many years of service. With that, I want to present you with a small token of our appreciation.
Thank you. Roger. I just want to, is it on?
Yep.
I just want to say thank you. I really enjoyed the time we had on the water. It's the best way to get out on the water without having to buy your own boat. It's beautiful.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Andy.
As the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, in recognition of your providing the town in Nahat over 20 years of service as Assistant Harbor Masters, it is privileged to offer you our thanks to you and Andy, and your contribution to the Nahat Harbor Masters Office and the police, and everything you do. I mean, the fire, the police, the everything. It's just, we congratulate you, and we have a little something, the Board of Selectmen has a little something for you, if you just come on up. These are platinum stickers. These are your colored stickers. There's one for you, and one for Andy. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. All right. Thank you, Roz.
Thank you, Richie.
Roz, thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
So, maybe I'll see you fishing down there instead.
Thank you for all you've done.
All right.
Thank you for all you've done.
Let's say a few things. Want to say a few things?
Oh, go ahead, yeah. Mr. Lombard would like to speak. Andy?
Roz, Roz, Roz and Andy, I want to congratulate you, putting all those years in. As you know, I see you go out in the afternoon and go on, especially during the summer months, and I don't know how many people you've pulled in and saved, and I always want to think, you know, your dedication, both, both of you, to the town, to the Christmas Parade, Roz and Andy, all the, all the things that you do going above or beyond as super citizens of the town and supporter of the town. On behalf of the Board, I want to thank you very much.
Thank you. It was a pleasure.
All right. Okay, now, sewer update. Sewer break update, and the Sewer Advisory Committee. We had three breaks, as everybody knows. The overall cost was in the $1.4 million range. Everybody wanted to know, and I think it's important that everybody does know what has happened, what it's going to cost us, and how we're going to fund it. Now, does anybody wish to speak on it? Richie, Dennis, whatever, want to get up and speak on it? Make sure that microphone's working, Dennis.
Do you have any specific questions, Ansel, at all?
No, I'd like to just see, you know, what the, well, I was with you today. You know, I'm going to be on that advisory committee with Mark, you, and Frank McCollum, if he's willing to do it.
What? It was just supposed to be three members.
Yeah, me...
No, you, Frank McGado...
Mark Cullen.
Mark Cullen, and Steve Schmidt. That was, that was the original, those three. They're all related to water and sewer, and Superintendent Public Works.
I thought that...
I thought...
I thought I was sort of in it.
You were.
I was.
Oh, okay, I wasn't sure, I just thought, no.
You asked, and we voted you in.
Oh, you did?
And you abstained from voting.
Well, actually, actually, the vote, if you look at the minutes, the minutes identify that you voted for a three-member board, but then you were going to vote tonight for placement of individuals on that board.
Okay, no, those are what's to be on it. I have no problem with that.
We can have a four-member board. I would welcome Steve, I like Steve, so I think he'd be an asset because he did work for Linway and Sewer, so I want to be part of it. So, that's what we'll do.
Well, I mean, the good news, the good news right off of Jump Street with respect to the Sewer Committee or Infrastructure Committee, is the foundation has already been built through Cofflin Engineering's report. It was an original report, infrastructure report that was authored in 2015, was just updated March 2017. It's a very comprehensive report. It lays out a pretty substantial and capital improvement plan. It's just, it's a function of how, how we as a town decide how we're going to fund these and prioritize the items that are before us. So, that being said, the foundation is, is here, we have documentation, we're ready to go. I think the committee is more, more of a signing board amongst each other at this point with, with respect to some professionals that understand the business. I'm not sure whether or not your, your idea as, as a Board of Selectmen is having that committee as a standing committee. I'm not clear on that.
What's that, Dennis?
Having it as a standing committee, meaning, meaning, you know, scheduled meetings, progress reports, et cetera, that type of thing.
No, I don't, I don't, let me be clear in this. I read the report. I'm quite surprised that you got it five days before the town meeting. None of the Board of Selectmen knew about it, yet the Administrator knew, had it for a couple of years, of the problems that we were having with our sewer mains. Mark Cullen had actually had warned the town in 2012 to get it, get on the stick and get it done. Dan Cofflin, let me tell you something, Dan Cofflin did an unbelievable job on it. I mean, he, he took house by house and measured the water meters as, you know, as intake and output. So, he knew, this is how extensive it was, it was $160,000 worth, and I don't know why we didn't have that in front of us, because certainly, infrastructure is probably the most important thing. No, it's not pretty, no, it's, it's not what people want to see, but you know, a size, a hole the size of a brick just cost us $1,004,000. Okay? So, I can tell you, I'm not happy about it. It's a reaction. Actions, actions speak, reactions are no good, never, never, never pan out. So, the second part of that equation is, we got grant money from the Community Compact, am I correct?
We did.
Okay. That should have been used, some of that was supposed to be used for the capital plan.
That was actually a servicing kind, and what we found is that the using of the MAPC would not have really served our purpose, so we passed on that. We received cash contributions for other elements, so that was a servicing kind.
What I saw online was that we got, we got money in services, and you know, the Community Compact is not just all about money, it's also about services. They'll come in and help us with this. And I would stress to the Administrator that you get a hold of the state and get some help from the state on this, so that we can be very clear on how we're going to fix it. They'll send people in to show us what to do, how to do it, maybe we tie in with Swamp Guard as a secondary main or whatever, but we need to, we need to deal with this. And that Community Compact, instead of going towards the open space master plan, which is going nowhere, it needs to be focused in on our, our infrastructure. And that was, that was part of it, so...
There were three specific awards, two of them were cash, the one that was servicing kind was for capital planning. Unfortunately, we were hindered by the fact that we did our capital planning as we do every year, or should do every year, from approximately June, July to October. We did not have a DPW Director in place until later October, and so unfortunately, we were hindered with that as an element. I've been lucky in the two years that I've been here to work with three DPW Directors, two Fire Chiefs, and two Library Directors. So, we've been hindered in many areas, and so what we try to do is actually move these capital plans along as quickly as possible. What I'm happy to see is the two DPW Directors that have been in place during my period of time here, they each grabbed something from the master plan. The first DPW Director, Gabe Federico, he actually brought forward cammering of the sewer lines, and this year, Dennis brought forward the pump station repairs, both elements out of the master plan. And so, it's really a matter now of us looking at the holistic problem, and in that holistic problem, we have to bite the bullet. This is going to be a significant cost, and it's been building over generations, and it will take an effort, and I think Dennis is up for it.
Well, that's not how I read the report. How I read the report was, we had breaks down there before. It's something that should have been done, should have been dealt with, and, and again, I just, I can't believe that it happened. I just can't believe it happened. I, again, I'm not, I'm not happy about it, and...
Excuse me, Ansel, can I?
And, and the, the other thing is, we can't, you just can't sit back and say that we didn't have a DPW Director or a Fire Chief or this or that. The focus was on other things, okay? The focus should have been on this, capital planning. Capital planning, the only capital plan I have in front of, I have it, I still have it, is police cars and DPW trucks and fire engines and fire, fire stations that, you know, that's not capital planning. Capital planning is, is this. So, I respectfully disagree with you, Jeff, so...
And I would respectfully disagree as well.
Richie? To answer your question, Dennis, the individuals we're recommending for this committee is here to help you.
Oh, absolutely.
Just, just an advisory committee, just, they have expertise, you know, Frank McGado's Superintendent of Public Works of New York, State of New York and New York City, so he's very good. Of course, Mark knows the situation, and I, you know, Dennis, you know, I mean, just to help you. To answer your question, just, they're in advisory capacity. After we got this report, I think they'll, they'll, they'll help you more than, more ways than one. And that's all, I think, you know, especially you being new and everything, this, it'll be a great, an asset to Nahat.
No, they absolutely bring...
We, we have the report, and the funny thing is, in the report, it spells out everything you need to do.
What's there?
Tells you everything that's wrong. It tells you that two years ago, we had a water, a same break, at the same place, and this is what you need to do. Dan Cofflin also sent me, you know, how to, they have this, this device that they can go in there, and they can measure the thickness of the walls of the force mains, and, you know, we've had, and we can't keep doing this. We have a pipe that's going across the golf course that's going to have to be replaced. It's old. I'm surprised that hasn't broken.
Once along the pipe, the force main down Willow Road, as well as, as...
Right.
Across the golf course, is a, is an antiquated system. We're crossing our fingers here.
Okay.
So, if I could give an update as to kind of how we're progressing through this initial concern. The initial concern is obviously that we have $1.4 million worth of costs associated with this. What we're, we are attempting to do next week is we're going before the DOR Finance Board, and that will allow us to do what's called emergency borrowing. Because this happened in such a way that it didn't allow us to go to the annual town meeting, what we have to do now is do the emergency borrowing approach, and this is, you know, standard, it's basically, it's self-explanatory as to what it is. So, we will do that Wednesday, and that we presume will get authorization to proceed. And what we can do at that point is, we can, and we'll have to talk about it politically, but we can go ahead and borrow through the emergency process and then ban, which is bond anticipation notes, which will allow us to buy ourselves time to think this through, and then when thinking it through, we can take a look at the cost of the reactive and then the cost of the proactive. And so, once we're through Wednesday, there's a team of us having to go down to DOR at the State House. Again, we feel confident that we'll get that authorization. Then we can come back and start to talk about the details.
Right. So, we're looking at a 1.4-ish number, just to be clear, that number is a, is a total number or aggregate number for the last three breaks, the Willow Road break, we're going to call it Linway 1 and Linway 2?
So, on, on that, I think if you use, and I, use isn't the right word, but have this as an advisory committee, so you don't have to go posting meeting minutes and meetings and stuff, just, hey, guys, let's get together, let's talk about this and this. That's what I got out of the emails.
Yeah, everybody, everybody's on the same page with respect to that.
An ad hoc committee.
Ad hoc, if you will, almost. And if I may, on, on yours, Jeff, Debbie Waters is going with you?
Yeah, it's the Town Accountant, Treasurer Collector, myself, Dennis, and then our Financial Consultant, who is Peter Frazier. He does our bonding for us, and so that team will be down at the State House on Wednesday, it's at 10 o'clock.
And at what point would you keep, do you keep the FinCom up to date?
Certainly.
Certainly, at what point? Once you get through?
Once, once we get through, and we assume that the Board will actually give us an indication that day.
Okay.
Yeah, and so, unless there's something unique and they need more information, they can give it to us that day, and then what we'll do is I'll send out an information package to all of you. I've given you the Board kind of a summary of some of the steps we can take to consider. You'll also see in there that we're under some additional pursuits, we're trying to make sure that we're capturing all offsetting opportunities, some of those having to do with our state representatives and federal representatives, as well as looking at some of the kind of legal issues that surround this.
Right, right. And just as an aside, the Department of Revenue and Local Services speaks very highly of Deb Waters.
Yes.
So...
Yes.
She has to go.
Exactly.
That's why I'm going to make sure.
Exactly, and they also speak highly of Peter Frazier, who is with First Southwest, who has been our bonding agent for a long time. So, no, it's, it's a good team.
Thank you.
Yes.
I certainly would rather be borrowing $1,500,000 to replace the whole force main, rather than replace that small hole, because we're going to have to borrow, I mean, again, that's not going to go away.
Absolutely, it's not going to go away.
And it's got to get done. So, people better be aware, and they better be prepared for it. Just, you know, again, there's...
That could be an update from the advisory group through Dennis.
Yeah, I think Dennis can come back and visit us on a routine basis, give an update. We're going to have to have those conversations, just to see how big of a bite we want to take, because you can do, you know, there's a significant number of improvements that have to occur, and we can do any portion of it in segments, or we can just take the whole...
Yes.
Are you going to use all the water and sewer money?
Well, right now, we have available, we transferred into our expense lines, about $622,000, and that makes it available, but what that does is that it depletes us in all of our reserves, so that's where we have to have the conversation to say, let's borrow and put those monies back in the reserves.
Why don't you borrow the 2.2?
Well, if we do the amount that we decide that we want to borrow now and then do the banning, by the time we go to borrowing, we can understand the full cost. So, if it grows because of the other actions, the proactive actions, then we'll understand that. So, it usually takes about two years to get through a ban like that.
I think we need, in that, Richie, in the Dan Cofflin's report, it actually gives you prices, I think, also. Gives us costs, so we could probably borrow, you're right, we probably could borrow the money not only to fix it, to repair, and also to do the major repairs that we need to get done now, like the force main on the Linway or the, on the Carsway, or tying it to Swamp Guard.
I just wouldn't leave yourself empty-handed.
Yeah, sorry.
No, I, I agree.
You know, just in case something happens between, by the time we get this thing fixed and the problems addressed.
Because the other side of that coin is, not just sewer, it's water. I mean, if we have a water problem...
I haven't, I haven't, the monies that have been transferred, right, I understand the finite aspect of that. What we've paid to date against these breaks is very minimal, and it's been done very purposely on my part. I need to do some forensics, I need to do some auditing myself of everyone, all our subcontractors' bills, just to protect the town, satisfy myself, that the numbers are where they need to, where they need to be, and I need to be, I need to come before this Board and the citizens who are paying the bill, including myself, as a resident, that we're 100% on the dime on this. So, we're taking it slow and easy. We owe our, we owe the, the general contractor some compensation at this point, he's been carrying the financial load for the last month or so, so...
I'd advise you, Dennis, don't wait too long.
No, we're, we're not.
These people, especially Grenice, they bent over backwards to come in here...
Oh, absolutely.
In the middle of the night, and they, and they fixed...
Absolutely.
You know, the $46,000 down the Willow was just enormous, but they did that job, and then the $200,000, the other one, the, the big one, of course, was a huge project because of the, you had to pump out all the sewers, pump station, but I, these people stayed with it, and they're...
Oh, absolutely.
Probably, I, you know, since I've been in office, these people have been fantastic.
Oh, they're outstanding.
They come out in January, middle of the night, if we have a water or sewer break, and they fix them. And these guys, you know, so I, I'd make sure that they, I would get them on the priority of whatever we have to get, get the young ladies, the auditor, bring in an auditor in. For this kind of money, you can, you could hire an auditor, audit the whole thing, it would be done in two or three days. I mean, there's not that many bills.
Yeah, you know, and what we would...
I mean, the state police are not going to burn you. I don't think that, or they might.
They've, they've been paid.
No, but you, you just take...
No, I, I understand, I just wanted to make sure...
You don't need to, you don't need to ask for us to, you know...
So, Richie, to your point, the concern is the reserves, any monies that we expend now when we do the borrowing and do the ban, then we can then put the reserves back in, and so it just shifts the burden.
I'd borrow the whole thing. I'd borrow the whole thing. This way here, you've got 662, just in case, till we get to the next special town meeting or annual town meeting, to, you know, put the articles in for the water and sewer that we need, and probably future borrowings too, but this, I would take care of this one right away.
Yes.
That's what I would do.
So, we'll know hopefully Wednesday afternoon.
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, they're going to give us shot money in the borrowing too.
Yes.
I mean, the percentage of the interest rate will probably be less than 2%.
Yes.
So, I, you know, that's, that's a great deal, this time, you know, for municipal powers.
Yep.
Okay, good.
It's a great deal, I just don't want to miss the, I don't want everybody to miss the, the point, and the point is, we need to get it done, and we can't have these things, sort of things happening again, so...
But, by the way, I just want to thank you personally. You, you and your team, Public Works, did an outstanding job. I mean, I, you, you got very little sleep in almost four days, and the people did the same, staying around the clock, three days pumping out those pump stations, I mean, let me tell you, that was one baptism of fire for a new Superintendent of Public Works.
Good stuff.
But I, I tell you, no, you did a good job, and I want to remind you, Mr. Chairman, I move that we write a letter to the Superintendent of Public Law Works, as well as all the Public Works employees, thanking them on their, their hard work and effort during these last three water sewer breaks. They've done an outstanding job, and they to be congratulated.
Absolutely.
I so moved that, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
We will. Poor Dennis had, you know, had a tough time keeping his eyes open.
Oh, please, I saw him, I, you know...
Did a great job, though, they all did, and it was, it was hair-raising, whatever.
Team effort.
Hang on, hang on for a minute, I want to, this contract for the boat ramp, I just got a, I got a new idea, I think, I want to bounce...
We're going to move into that next.
Okay.
Okay, so now, we're going to talk about the, next thing on the agenda is the WAF Project, Change of Work Order. Mr. Lombard, you wanted to...
You know, I, I think, I've looked at this problem, and I'm thinking to myself, we're going to be back in the same hole again, come December or January or February, when we try to get this, and he's going to be squeezed to get the contract done, we could have a snowstorm after snowstorm, the water's going to be, he's going to put some sort of alcohol or antifreeze in the concrete, which, you know, and, and that mix on the wall pouring the whole thing. I'm suggesting this, gentlemen. I understand Memorial Day, very important date, next thing is Fourth, next thing is the Tall Ship, June 6th through the 7th, next thing is July 4th. At the end of July, or the middle of July, we shut down the WAF, and give them the, go ahead and start this project, and we give them eight weeks, you know, the rest of July, a little bit of August, maybe a little bit of September, maybe a week of September, and they get this project done while the, the good weather. Are we going to inconvenience? Absolutely. But if you look at other communities, when they get a grant like this, okay, they shut it down. They couldn't care less about lobstermen, recreational boaters, they just shut it down, and we're taking a chance again of bringing in the same boat next December and January, and they're up, they're up here for an extension. Now, we've got a contractor in there with a $500 per day fine, and I, I think, I'm going to ask you to review your thinking on this whole thing, and let's get this WAF fixed once and for all. Is there going to be inconvenience? Absolutely. What can they do? Well, they can take their boats to the Linway, the NBC, they can pour their, we can allow them to put their skips over in Marjorie Park... They can pour their, we can allow them to put their skiffs over in Marjorie Park so that they can use it over there, they go up in high tide, or, you know. For that sake, they can put them on to the beach. And I mean, it just, we're just putting ourselves, and we're putting ourselves in the town in more stress again. And then if we don't get it done next January, February, or something happens, they gotta go to March, April. We're back into the same old, same old snag again. But if you look around the communities, they've got the Seaport grant. Most of the grants have already been approved, executed, and completed. We're not even, we're not anywhere near it. Do you know what I'm saying? We could use, we could lose this grant. So that's, I'm saying to you guys, I would rethink this, and, and I'd have them go right back at it the middle of July, since you got Memorial Day done. The tall ships is gonna be out June 6th through the 12th.
16th.
16th. And then we got what? What's next is?
July 4th.
Fourth of July. So they start near the end, they've got July, August, five weeks, September 4th. They said they can have it done in eight weeks. I mean, I, I think that's the way we should go. That's my recommendation.
I am, I, I have to stick with what we've done. I have comments on this also. Back in the minutes that we did not approve, I had suggested that we start 12, 11. It was the 4th. And then the fishermen were here. The only ones that were inconvenienced at all in December were the fishermen. They didn't like the 4th. So we put it up a week, and then we went up to the, someone, one of the fishermen or someone in the audience said the April 15th could even fit. So now we've got all kinds of time in there to have it done with no one inconvenienced. So I, although Richie, it makes sense, I, I think that this is the way to go. Oh. I'll give you my two cents. I don't trust them. I don't trust that they'll do it in July. I don't think they'll get it done, okay? When they bid it, they bid it in December. They said they'd get it done in December. They said they'd get it, you know, December through April, okay? Your engineer got paid $3,600. And by the way, she, is she here? I asked her to be here.
What I had actually scribbled on your agendas was that the Unified is still reviewing this matter. So I, really what I wanted to do was allow this conversation about the timing, and then we'll, we'll bring them back.
Well, no, no, your engineer, Vicky Masson, was supposed to be here. She, she got paid.
And we don't have...
She's not working for Unified, she works for us, correct?
We don't have anybody here because, again, this issue isn't ready to fully be discussed yet.
Okay. Let me explain something, Jeff. I, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen asked for her to be here. We gave her money, we paid her. I have all the emails, I have all the reports that everything was going as scheduled. And then boom, the rug is pulled off from under us. Now we're back to square one. I don't know where this July thing came from. You have to pour cement at 50 degrees.
Can you speak to that, Dennis?
Let, let, let me explain something. They knew what they were getting, they're not from the Bahamas, they're not from Florida, they're from here. They knew what they were getting into. They can pour cement in the wintertime. They don't just pour antifreeze in it, they put a chemical in it that will cure it, okay? I don't trust them. I don't trust what's going on here. Also, Child's Engineering, I'm looking at their report, they were supposed to be there once a week, checking on them. In their report, I have, I have yet to see one report from Child's Engineering stating that they knew that that, that wasn't gonna be fulfilled last year. I do agree with Mr. Lombard, that the Seaport grants have all been, all been done. I think we got a bad company. That's just my personal opinion. I don't think they're gonna do it. I don't think they're gonna complete it. Just from looking at the wall that they did, that took them, and by the way, they had the best, the best winter in the world to do it this year, and they blew it. Your engineer blew it, their engineer blew it, and, and so did the engineer that works for them, okay? We paid our engineer $4,000, Jeff, to give us a report. We got nothing. We paid Child's Engineering money to, to get on there once, once a week, six hours, okay? And come back with a report. I see nothing. Okay? It's December, and, and by the way, it's supposed to be December, the contract should say December...
4th.
No, it should say December 11th.
Yeah, it's...
Middle of December.
It says not to start earlier than.
This is, this is change of work order by Vicky Masson, P.E. I want to know why she's not here.
Because, again, this is still under review by the contractor, and so this isn't ready for...
But she's under review by us. We are paying her.
She's actually...
This is her change of work order, Jeff. This is not Dennis's, this is not yours, this is hers. I want to see her.
Dennis, can you explain how she functions in your operation?
Well, I wish I could make that kind of money.
Dennis, Dennis, can you explain? Dennis.
Well, let's, I, I really want to get a debate on this.
So, okay.
Let me ask you this question, okay? Why don't we just give the money back?
No, we're not gonna give it back, Richie.
Not do the flow. No, you're not gonna get it done. I know Rockport overran their Seaport landing grant, and they're looking for about a million six. And, and I'll be honest with you, if we don't spend our money and get it done, we're, we're gonna lose it.
So tell me why, tell me where the, the July came from.
I, I sat down, and I talked to some people, talked to Dennis, and, and I was talking to him. I said, you know, we're gonna be digging ourselves another hole, looking for December, January, February, March, April. This weather down here, you know, and I'm just saying to myself, why would you get involved in pouring concrete during the winter months where you've gotta put antifreeze in the concrete? That's how they do it. And why, why bother that? We're gonna, we're gonna not use the WAF for eight weeks. We can't, we can't shut it down for eight weeks?
Well, I mean, again, this is, this is coming up tonight, Richie. This came up 30, 10 minutes ago. This is the first I've heard that you wanted to change it in July.
Well, no, I, I, I just, I, you know, you know, you know, there's a lot going on here.
A simple phone call, you could have said, look, you know, this is what we should probably do. You know, again, get together, talk, let's see what we can do. Not blindside the other two Board of Selectmen members. Let's get it done, okay?
Listen, I'm not blindsiding.
Well, I want to know, I mean...
No one's blindsiding here.
I thought about it, I, did I mention, how many times I talked to you between Monday and tonight? At least you called three ti, five times, six times?
Oh, yeah, every now and then, yeah.
Yeah, so, I, you know, I mean, you know, I'm, I'm getting old and forgetful.
Okay, so...
And I don't, you know, and I, I think it out because I saw the contract coming up, and I said, yeah, I should have sent you an email. Yeah, but I'm not always, I'm not the email, you know, best.
Okay, so...
So I, you, it's just a suggestion.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
You can move it the next, next two weeks or something.
I'll, I'll entertain.
You don't have to, you know, throw me under the bus, say, you know, I, I blindsided. I don't blindside anyone.
I'm not, I'm not throwing anybody under the bus.
You said I'm blindsiding. I don't blindside anybody.
I'd like to, we should know this stuff before we come to the meeting. This is what you want to do. I'll entertain a motion that we change the change of work order by Victoria Masson.
Well, before you make the motion, why don't we think it over for a couple?
And we change it to July, the middle of July, Jeff? Is that what you want?
No, he, he, no, he, he didn't do it. Jeff didn't do it.
Okay.
Dennis, what would you suggest, middle, middle of July?
I, I, I'm speaking purely, my thought is, is purely, purely from an engineering standpoint, all right? So when do you, when do you suggest we do it?
We have a window, all right? Obviously, the better, the better the weather, the, all right?
Yeah.
The better off the product we're gonna get, the end product, okay? Yes, I agree with Mr. Lombard with, with respect to some inconvenience. Yes, there is, all right? You do your kitchen over, you're gonna have some inconvenience. You do a bathroom over, you're gonna have some inconvenience. Same, same theory.
Okay. Let's put it into a motion then.
But before, before we go further, all right? Let's make sure, because we've been back and forth on this with this contractor.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
We've now put a no change, change order together at, on a particular date, correct?
Correct.
All right?
Let me stop you there.
What are we working to?
Let me, let me stop you there. We're in the driver's seat.
Correct.
We're the customer.
Correct.
Remember that.
Yes, we are.
I don't want to hear you tell them, or you tell anybody, that this is what we're gonna do. I don't want any confusion. The Board of Selectmen make this decision, okay?
Okay.
And you're not to tell the Unified, or whatever their name is, anything until we give you the order to do that, to do so, okay?
Why don't you think it over?
And, and so that's how it works, all right? So I don't want to hear that they're confused and we're, we're juggling them around. So the bottom line is, put it into a motion, Mr. Lombard, if you wish. I'll, I'll entertain it.
I, I, I just brought it up tonight, okay? Why don't you put it on in our next meeting so we can discuss it openly and be...
And you're gonna have every fisherman and every person that puts their boat in the water.
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. We've, we've heard it all before. Both the recreational, we heard it from the fishermen. But I'll be honest with you, I mean...
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
They're gonna make some other arrangements.
I'll, I'll entertain a motion that we change the, the change of work order should be done, we'll start the project in July.
Wait, wait, before you do that, make a motion, say, why don't we have Dennis check and Jeff check with the contractor? To see if it's possible before we vote on it, so there won't be too many changes. He may have already booked jobs. This guy's, I mean, not waiting on the hunt, time on the hunt for half, $800,000 contract. I mean, he's got other contracts he's doing too. He might not have the equipment ready for July. You know what I'm saying?
I, I agree with you. Just to circle back very, very quickly.
Also, my two cents, to have one of the selectmen talk to someone in the street or the DPW means nothing to me anymore. I'm done with that. It has to come before the Board. It's before the Board tonight for us to think about. I agree with Richie. There's no way we vote on it tonight. But I agree with you, we're going to have all this, I purposely listened to the fishermen. Everyone else was out of the picture. December 11th, well, it was the 4th, and I pushed for the 11th. Everything was perfect. I thought it was put to bed, except for the penalty clause, the damages, which is in here. And now we're going back. Right, so I'm, I'm not ready to vote on anything tonight.
Well, and as Richie said, we should be speaking to the contractor to see if he's engaged and he has no availability.
I, I'm ready to make a vote. I'm ready to take a vote on tonight to do, start at December 11th, as planned. This is how I, how I remember it, how I, how I wanted it, so...
You, you don't have to take a vote. The vote has already been taken.
I don't think...
In the minutes, if I may.
Right. It, it's, it's December 11th, and the change work order, again, is different than what was supposed to have.
Sorry. Mr. Taylor wants to accommodate the obstomen schedule. Mr. Taylor made a motion to make the change order with a 12, 11, 17 start date and 4, 8, 18 finish date, and to add a penalty clause. Mr. Barrell seconded for discussion, discussion. Mr. Lombard made a motion to have Town Council review and amend change order as needed to sign it at 5:18 Board of Selectmen meeting. Mr. Barrell went on record to say he doesn't, blah, blah, blah. It was never voted on. That's, and that's one of the things I wanted to have fixed too in the minutes. If we didn't vote on it, I thought we did.
Yeah, we did. And that's why it...
And my, my concern is that we're going back and forth with the developer. And what I want to make sure is that we don't lose them at some point.
But how is it that we have December 4th here, Jeff?
I'm not sure how we got to December 4th, but that was in my notes, and it's easily changed to 11th.
I'd like to hear from the Town Council also on the penalty clause. Is it retrievable? And where did you come up with $507? You have to talk in the mic. Thank you.
The clauses are unenforceable in Massachusetts. This has got to be a liquidated damages clause.
Right.
And to make it enforceable, we've got to tie it to some damages that we can predict would occur due to a delay. Now, Jeff did a great job in outlining a daily charge that amounts to just over $500
Yep.
that we could then argue is related reasonably to the damages we can anticipate in terms of delay. So it's not a penalty. So that word really should be struck in from our vocabulary. It's liquidated damages. We cannot penalize folks for being late on the contract. It's unenforceable in Massachusetts. So we call it liquidated damages clause. We tie it to what we reasonably foresee as our delay cost, and that's the liquidated damages clause.
Okay, thanks.
So the question is on how we'd like to proceed. Again, Unified is looking at this penalty or this liquidated damages, and we'll get back to us. But right now, this is what was before them. We can change the specifics if we want to go from the December 4th to December 11th. That's easily changed. The big issue that we had discussed last time was the damages. And as Dan just called out, what we'd set as a goal is 500. And so that's where we came up with the 507. And thanks to Dan for helping guide us to a point where we actually have that, and we think it's defensible. So if, depending on whatever the date is, this would be a date change work order for December through April. If you would like to, we can speak with Unified again and then come back to the next meeting and speak to their availability.
Well, they said they were available on December 11th. The guy was here. He said that, he said they could do it in December.
So what they had done is, if you look at it, we had first talked about, as soon as we learned upon, about the fact that they wanted to meet the timeline, the original timeline, we moved them to a July window. And then we moved them back to a December window, and then we would move them back to a July window. So I think at this point, just to be fair to...
Why did you move them back to the July window?
Well, first, we started with the December window. And then through Richie's discussion, we went to a July window.
Just the other day?
Excuse me?
Just yesterday, or?
No, no, in the series of discussions that we've been having between the Board and myself and Dennis, so...
I've never, never, I've never mentioned July. I've never, T and I, I don't think, I've never, the word July never come out of my mouth. I don't, I don't understand it. I don't, I don't, I don't understand it, Jeff. I really don't.
It's not necessarily July, because at the time, the second option we looked at was, I think it was April to...
We had, we had a, we had a series of dates.
I can't understand why we can't get it right. It's simple. We decided December. They, they were supposed to do it last year. We are the customer.
Okay.
The last time I checked, if I get somebody upset at my garage, they're not coming back. Okay? So, and I've done it.
All right, let's just get it, get on with it. Come on, come on, let's, let's get on with it. Go December 11th. I couldn't care less. I just, I'm telling you, if we lose the money, please.
I don't think we're gonna lose it. I don't see how we can lose it.
Oh, really? Okay.
We've, we've secured the grant, so it's good for another fiscal year.
Yeah, well.
So how would the Board like to proceed?
You have a vote, Jeff. What do you want me to tell you?
We have a vote for December 11th. It's already on the books. Let's go with it.
Okay.
That's it, okay?
Are they under the impression that, are they under the impression that it's July?
No.
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 No, 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 no.
December. No, I'm just asking, because July keeps coming, I get July and December, July and December, July and December.
All right, let's just get on with it.
Okay, next.
Town Administrator Report.
Town Administrator Report.
We are lucky enough to have Joe Miracle here, who is our liaison for National Grid. We had actually spoken at the last meeting about Nick...
Brokran.
Brokran, thank you, who had submitted a citizen petition at the town meeting, and it had to do with gas leaks. So we had asked National Grid to come and talk to us about the gas leaks. And we have before us a example of a Waymouth bylaw that Town Council has brought forward. Interestingly enough, the Waymouth bylaw was derived from the Boston regulation that Nick had brought forward. So we're kind of all working in the same circle. And the Waymouth bylaw, as according to Council, can easily be modified to become a Board of Health regulation. So what we're looking today to do is to have Joe kind of talk us through how federal government, state governments have been changing your world. And then if we are happy with the Waymouth model, I'll work with Council and bring back to you kind of a Board of Health bylaw that's specific to the hunt. So, Joe, if you want to kind of walk us through your world?
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to come here and be part of the conversation. Gas leaks are an incredibly important issue to us as a company, to the public in general. Safety is always our number one concern, and as well now with the environmental impact of some of these leaks. So a little background on gas leaks is that there's actually three grades of gas leaks. Grade one is considered an immediate hazard, and it's repaired immediately. Our crews won't even leave the scene until the gas leak has been repaired and that it's tested as no gas. Grade two is a, is a hazard but not immediate, and we're given 12 months to repair them. We usually repair them much sooner than that, although the 12 months is built in because of the moratorium for the wintertime and the weather in this part of the country. And grade threes, which can really be a contentious issue, because for, traditionally for the... for the last hundred years, utilities have not been required to fix grade three leaks. They're considered not a hazard to people or property. We continuously monitor them, and then if they become a grade two or a grade one, they're repaired. If there's no change, they're monitored and just kept on a list and tracked. Like I said, historically, there's never been a public or property risk with these leaks, but not just our world is changing, but the world at large, and the environmental impact has now become something that we have to consider as a utility and as a society. We're working with the DPU, which is Department of Public Utilities, on something that we instituted called our Gas System Enhancement Plan, our GSEP Plan. What that is, it's requiring us, within the next 20 years, and this is started in 2016, to replace all the leak-prone pipe in the state of Massachusetts, which is actually a little over 3,300 miles of leak-prone pipe, which is cast iron or unprotected steel. In Nahant, there's about 17 miles of piping. 11 of those miles are actually leak-prone pipes, or cast iron or steel, and six miles are plastic, which is the newer pipe, not prone to leaking. Our plan to replace over the next 20 years is aggressive. Right now, I think we change about .2 miles of piping in Nahant. We're gonna need to up that to a mile, maybe a mile and a half per year. So we're gonna need to work closely with the town officials, Dennis at the DPW, to make sure we can efficiently do this, to match it with your paving plans, to do it during times that'll have the least impact on your residents. Traditionally, we have moratoriums across the state of Massachusetts because of weather. A lot of towns, we're looking to work during the winter time. That's something that might be perfect for a town like Nahant, where you have, you know, a heavy population on days like today when it's 90 degrees. It might be better for us to come in, you know, late in the season and try to address some of these issues. In addition to the GSEP, we have another pronged approach, which we're working with the Department of Public Utilities. It's an approach where identifying 500 significant emitters of natural gas or methane that are classified as grade threes. We haven't yet nailed down a definition with the Department of Public Utilities as to what that will be. So there will be 500 leaks, grade three leaks addressed this year, in addition to the leaks that we're getting through our main replacements. I can tell you that as of the report I pulled last month, which I get quarterly, Nahant had 39 grade three leaks. There were four grade two leaks that were left over from the winter time. When I checked with Bill Mosca, who is the on-the-ground supervisor today, there was one pending grade two. There's still the 39 grade threes, but that one, grade two, who actually thinks might have been repaired, because sometimes you'll have two leaks, and there'll be next-door neighbor businesses or houses. So we'll have a leak at 39 and 41. In our system, it's classified as two, but it's really only one leak. He thinks that might be the situation there. In terms of an ordinance, it's not something I necessarily feel would be required. I think we do need to work closely with the town and with the town officials and with the public in general. We have to be more aware of these things and work together to address them efficiently. The ordinance, however, I don't think really accomplishes that. It can put some extra burdens on us as a company to maybe, I saw one of the pieces in there, was about any time someone pulls a street opening permit, to have the utility company come in and do a leak survey. The way that we operate, we plan these repairs years in advance. So it's something that would be, if we were coming in, you know, every two weeks to try to pick one grade three here, one grade three here, one grade three here, it's not going to be efficient. And with cast iron, if you repair a grade three leak, because of the way the joints are structured, you might actually cause another one at the joint 100 feet down the way. So the company believes that the most efficient thing to do is to get in there and replace that. And like I said, right now, it's about .2 miles, which doesn't seem like a lot, but that will be about five or sixfold. We're looking to do one, maybe two miles a year in Nahant over the next few years. So it's going to be very important that we work closely with everybody in this room to make sure that we do this very efficiently. There will be times where we may need to go into a street that's already been paved, or maybe we need to come in after, just after you paved it. And I know that those can be speed bumps, but I think we can work together to address this. I just took over this position about six weeks ago. The person that was here before me, David Santana, is a phenomenal person, and I think he did a great job. What I'd ask is that you gave me a chance to work with everybody in this room, Dennis, and see if we can, you know, come together to a solution that works. And I think we have a great plan. It's something we think about. I'd say if you asked 15 years ago, the utility company, like, what are you doing about grade threes, they'd say, we're not doing anything. You know, we're not required to. There's no safety risk. Now we know that there is an impact, there's an environmental impact, and we have the same goal, is to get rid of these leaks. Just we have different methodologies of how we get there. I think the most efficient thing to do, work together, follow the GSEP plan, get the leak-prone pipe out of the ground and get the new plastic in, and then we do it in an efficient way. I think it does work for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Excuse me?
We have a couple of cards I can give you from anyone in this room that needs to reach me. I'll leave them.
Couple of questions.
Yeah, sure.
Richie?
Have you given him the list of the Chapinani paving contract for the streets this year?
We haven't yet.
Yet. We're developing that list.
And if you... You need to get the list of the paving?
We do. So we just hired 250 people on the gas side, and where, the goal is to work very closely with cities and towns on their paving schedule, to work not just maybe one year, but if we can, two, three, four years in advance. That can be difficult, because I know it changes day to day sometimes what you pave and what we need to work on. But even an idea of streets that you know, you know, are going, need to be paved, because maybe then we can target some of those areas before you get to them. There will be, there's going to be room for improvement. It's a new program, but that would be very helpful. And we have a woman, Lea Hunt, she works in our Public Works Group, and she kind of collaborates with all the DPWs around the state, gets all that information. Our engineers match it up to our necessary pipe.
I got three roads for you. Willow, Emerald, and Ocean. It looks like Chequah Board Square out there. You've had so many breaks down there. Those pipes need to be definitely replaced, right to the main. The other, the complaint I have is, when you put the forced high-pressure main down at the end of the causeway, at the end of the causeway and brought it across, and then you upgraded the pump station at the corner of Nahant Road, okay, and Castle Road, which is at the Veterans Park right there?
Okay.
You dug up the outbound lane from that plant to the causeway, and now that outbound line is sagging. So, and I thought, when you told us, advised us, when you were going to dig up that main and put the new main in, you were going to hot-top the whole road.
Okay.
And I thought, you know, I said to myself, God, you guys reneged on that commitment. Hopefully you can get that hot-top for us.
Typically, you know, we wouldn't do curb-to-curb, but we do come to agreements and make exceptions for things like that. If we agreed to it, then I think we should honor it, and I can work towards that. Just another update on, we do, now we hired a whole lot of trench inspectors, because we're having an issue where we pave a patch, it would sink, and then we'd get a call from the city or town or a complaint from the resident. We've actually implemented a new program where we put a temporary patch in, and then we actually schedule a trench inspection for one year following, so that we can follow up and see if it needs to be compacted or additional paving put down. So that's a new program as well. Hopefully, it's working a little bit better, so you see some, a little bit less of those speed bumps or patches.
Glad you came.
I appreciate it. I'll leave my cards right over here for you all. If you have any questions, gas and electric, I do both.
Just make sure Dennis and the town manager has them.
They do, and they've both been great to work with, and I really appreciate it.
They're not, you know what I mean?
What was that?
They're not that bad.
No, no, you've been really good. It's actually been...
Thanks.
This is the first time, or second time I've been in Nahant. The first time was when I met Jeff and...
Well, you got a new chairman this year, and I tell you, he's not gonna, let me tell you. You heard him already, right?
No worries. It's my job, and I appreciate it. Anytime you can come to Nahant, you know, I look forward to it. So like I said, I'll leave my cards, keep them. Constituents, yourself, businesses, if you need, have a need with National Grid, feel free to give me a call.
Joe, before you go, speaking to the Waymoth bylaw that could be turned into a Board of Health regulation for the town of Nahant, does that do anything for us? I mean, when you look at the federal demands that you're under, are we basically belt-in-suspenders?
So obviously, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't want to pretend to be one. But, you know, the stat, the regulations for a lot of things that we do, they're regulated at the state level. So a lot of our paving requirements are state-level requirements. So it may be a situation where if there's two opposites, we'd stick by the state regulation.
Yeah.
So I'm not, I won't pretend to be an expert. I did pass the copy that you had forwarded me over to our legal people to look at, and Waymoth is actually our community as well. Not my area, but I could reach out to how we're dealing with Waymoth. I know in Boston, we have, Boston is also a National Grid territory, working with them. But it's something, it's serious. Great, you know, leaks in general need to be fixed, and we're working as a plan. That's the important thing. We have the goal to solve them all. It's just, how do we get there? And I think we're in decent shape to get there. There may be some speed bumps over the next, you know, 16 years or so, but that's why I'm here. You know, we can hopefully work through all those.
And then Dan, if I could impose upon you, Dan Scrip, Town Council, how do you feel about the Waymoth regulation? Does it add benefit, or is it belt-in-suspenders?
I...
If you could stand up to the mic.
I'm sure it's been on the whole gas leak. That's all pretty new to me, to be honest with you. But I do know that the folk, the fellow that drafted it, or at least modified it from Boston, is a former assistant attorney general, so he's a pretty sharp fellow. So my initial reaction is it's pretty solid, but I have not compared it to the state or federal mandates. I'm going to come up to speed to that, to be honest with you. That's pretty much is new to me, in my brain. But it seems to be good.
I got a couple of questions. Mr. Brokran took the time to actually put something on the warrant, so obviously he did some research into it, am I right? Boston, was the Boston amendment, I believe? It was Boston's. I don't think it's a bad thing to have an ordinance or a town bylaw for this. So I would ask, if you want to work on something like that, to help us out to get through this, because I think we are going to have a special town meeting in, it's probably October, September, October, for the Coast Guard housing, and that could be added to it. I think a bylaw would be a good thing to have, only to keep, you know, keep things on the up and up. Okay?
Thank you, Joe. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. I'll see you next Thursday, hopefully.
So...
Great, thank you.
So to kind of close this discussion up, what we'll do is we'll continue to work on the Waymoth model with Nick and try to refine it, bring it back as a Board of Health regulation. And it does, I think, have some elements in it that are interesting, like, for instance, it has the tree and shrub damage component, which is, components already exist, but it'd be nice to put it in a package, so you can only point to the one package.
Great.
So thank you, Nick.
All right. Yeah, thanks. And thank you. You gonna leave your cards back there?
(inaudible).
Oh, great. Thank you.
Joe, thank you, Dan. Yep. So for, ready to move on on that one? The next one has to do with the waste management. So we had spoken about the fact that waste management, in order to address one of our concerns, which was the fact that their workers are moving too quickly through the town, we were going to split it into two days. And so you have before you their proposal for how they would roll that, and what they're looking at is the third week in July is when they would start the process, and the dividing line on the two days would be Spring Road. And so Little Nahant, Bass Point, and those neighborhoods would be Thursday, and then Big Nahant, the rest of the neighborhoods, would be Friday. The key benefit here is that if any of the pickups are missed on Thursday, they could be picked up on Friday. So that's really, really good. But I think for us, our concern about the speed and the kind of messiness that it's created with the trash collection, that would be resolved by having two days. And so if you're comfortable with us rolling forward with this kind of a PR campaign and a timeline, we'll go ahead and talk with Waste Management and get this on the webpage, and start the reader board at Nahant Road entrance.
I'm okay with it, but there's one thing I want to ask. Can we squeak some recycling bins out of them?
They actually provide us through the contract a certain amount per year for that, and so I think we could probably do that. We've been trying to figure out how to use that. It's accumulating. So depending on what we'd like to do, we can come back and try some concepts. We were actually talking about maybe doing some standardized container of some kind that, you know, everybody uses, and it's similar all the way down.
Yeah, because people have been asking me, so that would be good, if we could get, you know, and then follow up with it at the next meeting.
Sure.
Are you looking for specifically, I missed your...
People are asking for recycling bins. Do you have any down the DPW?
No.
No. No, if we can get some out of them, that would be great, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll bring it back to the next meeting.
Keith?
Are you okay with the two days?
Sure. I'm actually fine with the way they do it now, but I'm on flash road, so...
Well, they do rush, and you know, it's not easy for them.
No, two days is fine. I was just, a little joke, I thought I'd throw a little humor here, you know?
Richie?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, great. We'll proceed with that. We'll come back and talk about the recycling bins. Next item has to do with the discussion of a special town meeting. If you look at the back of your book, you have a calendar. If you go the way to the back, on the back, no, flip the back whole thing over.
Oh.
Yeah. So that'll help you to kind of look to see scheduling-wise what we were thinking about. Richie, you'd mentioned earlier that traditionally, it's kind of that September-October window where you see special town meetings.
I think that's October 28th. Or Monday night, whatever. Depends on how many articles you have on there.
Right. I'm, I think we're going to have a few, so I think we're gonna...
Do we have a pattern on special town meetings? Do we do it during the week or do it on the weekend?
It's always been on, like a Monday night.
Special town meeting.
For everybody.
If there's only one article, but if you've got, it looks like we're going to have two or three, four, you might want to go...
I like Saturday also.
Yeah.
You know, Saturday, it's the end of October.
Especially for discussion now, let's wait till things fall in place, but a tentative could be October 28th. I wouldn't want to nail it down tonight.
I'd go October 28th with a backup date of November 4th or the 11th.
Okay. So we, so we're going to say it's definitely October and possibly November, all right?
Yeah, just, you know, you stay, I would stay away from, you know, the 18th or the 25th, Thanksgiving week.
So why don't I do this? I'll run the timelines for both, and then we can start to see how, when you're trying to load in the Coast Guard housing, how that has to fall into place.
Keep everybody apprised of those dates that we're discussing, so they, that committee, the Coast Guard Housing Committee, they've got a, you know, you're working backwards from that date, so.
Exactly.
Correct.
Get a recommendation in whatever it is, okay?
Correct.
So we'll, I'll put those together for the next meeting.
Okay.
Moving along, Coast Guard housing, review of the town meeting action, and then review of the new committee. At this point, I don't have a listing of the new committee members. I've been trying to move that along, but I've been unsuccessful, so...
Yep. Can we, the coast, the committee, it hasn't been appointed yet?
No.
I mean, we've appointed ours, but what, moderator?
No response yet.
Okay. Well, he's got to get on the, you know, we're wasting time, so I'd like to get that going, you know, whatever, whoever the picks are.
Did you call him? Call him?
Dave.
I've contacted him. I don't want to be too intrusive.
Right. No, I mean, he must have an idea who's applied.
Yeah.
He replied to my email right away.
Right.
So that was good.
So I say he just, I mean, we have our choices. Richie's got, chose Mark, and I chose Pam Anady, and T.
I figured Padgiano.
Padgiano. So there's three there, and then we're gonna, Dave appoints the rest, so.
Padgiano, okay. All right. All right. I will try to lock that down as quickly as possible.
Okay.
Okay. If there's anything else, town meeting follow-through, follow-up on action items. So what I've done is I provided you our traditional, we have an executive summary that carries through, and just, we use it as a checklist to make sure that we understand what happened with all the actions, and it's a reference point through the years as we want to do a quick reference point. You'll also see a listing of, as you go through all those articles, what has to be done to follow through on some of them. Some of them are borrowings, some of them are bylaws. Some of them are borrowings, some of them are bylaws that need to be recorded with the AG's office, et cetera, et cetera. So, looking at that, it just kind of gives you a working log as to what we'll be doing moving forward. The one thing I haven't done is I haven't weeded through the actual budget itself to see what budget items that we'll have to kind of work through. But, that's something that Town Council and I will quickly get through. So, this just, again, is just a means of helping you to understand all that's before us.
Okay, the follow-up list, Article 10, you need to fix that. Town moderator will finalize appointments on, the selectmen finalize their own appointments, and the moderator finalizes his appointments. That should take care of that, square that away.
Great.
And these, you do every year, right? You have, it's like, it has to be done by June 30th or something? I saw in your contract, that was kind of...
Some, well, some of them have to for purposes of closing out the fiscal year, like the Article 3s. But, most of them are, they go into the next fiscal year?
They'd have to.
Yeah.
Some of them, I mean...
So, this is just something we try to work through the summer, so that by fall, we're pretty clean, and we dealt with everything. And you'll see that you get to Article 33, which is CPC articles, that's loaded. We have a lot of CPC articles that we will be procuring right away, and then, starting the process of implementation.
Thank you.
The cemetery revised policies. So, at one of our previous meetings, we discussed some revisions to the cemetery policies. And then, it was asked if we could put those on the town website. So, what I've done is worked to modify them and update them. And what you see before you is a modified and updated version with all of our last input. One of the elements that we should talk about is Item 2B, which has to do with plot sales. What we're seeing is a new tradition, or I should say, an evolving tradition, of moving from standard burials to cremations. So, in keeping with those trends, what we envision is there would be multiple cremations that would be permitted in a standard plot. The question is how many you would suggest we would limit that to?
Well, let's put the motion forward, and then, we can discuss it.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the revised green law, lawn, cemetery regulations, and policy and procedures.
Second.
Discussion. There's no limit on cremations, we should put a limit on that. And in one spot, one plot, I mean, I don't want to have a hundred in there, you know? Do they have to buy... Do they have to purchase the, they have to purchase a cremation lot, if they want to...
No, what this would envision is that if you have a plot, you would have one grave marker, and that grave marker could list all the cremations that are in there.
But, when they open up the grave, even if there's a person buried in there, the whole person is buried in there, and if they want to put a cremation in there, what is the actual fee? Do they pay an opening fee, or do they pay for another lot?
There is an opening fee, and I believe it's $50.
I mean, I don't, I think we can limit it to four.
Four?
Four or five cremations in one burial lot, full burial lot. Cremation lots should be different.
Yes, well...
One cremation per cremation lot.
Exactly, exactly. And we checked with the Board of Health agents, just to make sure we're not looking at a Board of Health issue here, but he said, no, there really isn't.
No.
The cremation containers are pretty self-contained. So, so, four at this point?
Four reasonable?
Four's reasonable.
Richie?
Four's good to me.
What's that? Are you okay with this, four cremations in one?
I don't know, how many you can fit in there? How many can you fit in there?
It's, well, if you look at a cremation, it's like a small...
Oh, I know.
It could line the whole...
You could do Jenga on that, yeah.
You can only have one stone.
Exactly, and that's called out specifically in here.
Yep.
And what we would do is we would note...
I don't think, I think four's fine, I don't think anymore. Although, there's some large families still, a lot of large families. I was just reading the legal residents only, in the cemetery, you know? You know, if someone dies from a large family, at that time of the death, the parent or the mother of someone, they can buy as many plots as they need to cover that family. So, if a large family in the town, you know, seven, the parents had seven kids.
Yeah.
If one of the parents die at that time of the death, they can buy seven or eight plots.
They can? Of course, I didn't know that, so.
Oh, yeah.
So, should we limit that?
At the time of the death, at the time of the death, they can buy, you know, for the people.
Maybe we should limit that.
We've always looked at it as it's one purchase per death. And so, if you look at the cremations in that one plot, you could look at four.
Can we table this, I like to, I just saw this, I want to review this.
Sure.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Yep, good idea.
I've got to read the whole thing, and there's questionable things in here. And we should have Mary or whoever handles these death certificates give us the cost breakdown, break out for us.
Okay.
And then, give us the difference from these new regulations in the cemetery to the old regulations. What's different about them?
Yeah.
Put them in red, or some different color of typing, so I know where we're different, and where we go, and if there's any new regulations being put in.
Yeah, so what you'll see is you do have an old copy behind there, but I think it'll help to have the additional information, as you're saying.
Well, it just, you got them listed and numbered, so I wouldn't change it.
I think what we, the other thing we could do also is have Cemetery Committee look at it also.
Sure. Is Mr. Jim here, are you here for this?
No, he's here for the chair. So, I will charge the committee to look at the regulations, because we've got to be careful on that. We don't want, I mean, if a husband dies, he buys two lots, one for him and one for his wife. That's how it should be done.
What about the kids?
Not seven, well, because if they don't live in Nahant anymore, I mean, I understand that, but...
That's the question, that's the question.
And then, we run out of space, and then, we're in trouble, so.
Well, we ran out of space, that's why we were moving the cemetery, the new cemetery, behind the school. Behind the police station.
I think we need to look at it, I think it's always been a legal resident of the town only.
I agree with you, absolutely agree with you. But, if the parent dies, one of the parent, they have an opportunity to purchase for the family. That's always been in the practice, as long as I've been on the board.
Seven or eight lots?
Well, I'm not saying, I'm not saying there's seven kids in the, there might be two or three kids.
I know some families in...
And they all want to be buried with the parents.
I know, I know some families in Nahant that had 11 kids, and my, you know...
Well, no, I understand that, but, I mean, but, they, it's always been that way. They want to be buried with the parents.
Well, we should limit that, limit that to husband and wife, and I understand...
I totally disagree with you on that one, that's not how it's been.
Good thing we tabled it.
Yeah, we'll discuss it.
We can look into it.
And we'll have the, we'll table it, and we'll have the, maybe we'll have the committee look at it, and they can give us their recommendation, we don't, and then, you know, we can go from there.
And there's a death in the family, the undertaker usually comes up here and says, you know, we've got the husband died, and we've got three other, some of them all want to be buried with the parents.
Honestly, Richie, I've never heard of that, so, that's why we should table it.
You've never heard of that?
No, I'm sorry, I wasn't on the Board of Selectmen, so, I haven't...
Well, I'm just, I'm just seeing, you know, I'm just...
Seven or eight plots being...
I'm just...
And I can tell you, I'm not for that, you know, that could really get out of hand, so.
Rich, and we'll also run those numbers that you asked for. So, I'll bring that back. Now, we get into the event request section of our agenda. First one up is the Ellingwood Chapel Concerts, excellent series, and they have a full calendar coming up. And we have Jim Walsh here to speak to those, and you also have a motion that you can read if you so desire.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve Nahant Historical Society's Ellingwood Chapel Concert Request for 5/6, 6/24, 7/15, 8/19, 9/7, and 9/23, and 12/16, 2017.
Second. Okay, discussion. I think it's a great deal. What, I just have one question for Jim, what happens to the money that is collected? Is it donated, or...
Jim, could you come up to...
Yeah, because we can't, otherwise, we can't hear you. Or they can't hear you.
My hearing is bad enough so that I have trouble understanding you sitting out here, but what was your question?
The money, the monies that are collected there, what do they, what do you guys do with it?
The money that is collected for, like, admission to a concert?
Yeah, yeah, the concerts.
That goes to the Historical Society, and it's used to fund, to pay the musicians, and we pay a fee, of course, to the town.
Yeah.
We spent $200 to go in and have the entire chapel cleaned, top to bottom, before the series started this year.
Yeah, good.
So, you know, that's the answer to that.
Thanks. Thank you. Anybody else?
There were some questions raised about lights that we put up, and I'd just like to talk about that just for a second. When we have a concert at night, the, there is no lighting in the cemetery, the entry to the cemetery. So, the nightmare scenario is to have philanthropists walk out after a concert at 10 o'clock at night and fall down in the driveway because she didn't see something in front of her. What we want is to put up lights, you know, the day before a concert, and then, take them down the day after or so, in that timeframe, so, because we don't want anyone to get hurt.
Who's not allowing you to do that? Who said...
I'm sorry.
Who's not allowing you to do that?
Oh, no, it's not that no one is allowing me to do it, but I was told that there had been, for some reason, that became an issue. So, I'm just explaining why we did it, and...
Issue with whom?
Pardon me?
Who was the issue with? Jeff, we have an issue about lights down there?
No, this last concert, there were some lights put up, and the bulbs were new, and so, they, when they came down, they broke, and there was glass in the area.
I think what happened was somebody tried to take them down instead of us, and let us, you know, they are relatively delicate. The first time that we did it, we had very bright lights, that didn't work out so well. So, we got little five-watt lights, but there are enough of them that it provides, you know, a safety corridor. But, they're delicate, so they, I put them up, I broke a couple putting them up. Whoever tried to take them down probably broke 20 or 30 of them.
Why don't you bring in some spotlights, so you can cover the whole thing, don't...
So, I mean, from my point of view, it's best for us to do it, we'll be careful.
No, I just...
They were hanging in the trees, right?
Yes, that's right.
Maybe they can put those, you can put those round lights on stakes, just to line them?
Oh, yeah, the solars, kind of the solar options?
Well, you know, the hooks have been there, they were there before I ever put up a light. They've been there for a long time. I added, actually, one this year, just on a tree that didn't have one. But, we just don't want to see anybody get hurt. Did you guys see the article in the paper, by the way, about the concert we did with the kids in the town?
Excellent.
Yes.
Wasn't that fantastic?
Yeah.
It was great. Anyway, let me just say that 21 years ago, Dick Carter, and Karen Fallett, and Nancy Cantamo, and a bunch of people got together, moved the lawnmowers and ladders and stuff out of the chapel, and had the first concert there. And that was 21 years ago. If you saw the pictures in the paper, or if you've been there recently, it's really beautiful. It's a beautiful, beautiful space to perform in, and I think the community preservation people, and all the other committees, more committees have been involved in doing good things there than I can think of from any other context.
You and your committee that do that, you should be commended, you've done a great job.
Yes, thank you, Rich.
Okay, so, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Oh, I'm sorry, no, just, maybe the Cemetery Committee can authorize you guys to be the only ones to touch the lights? I was thinking that, this way, you're responsible for them.
Right, so, I, from my point of view, it's easiest to work through Jeff, and, you know, any questions, rather than have a committee, I can go to one guy, he can tell me, do this, don't do that, so.
So, you guys pull, you guys would take the lights down?
Yeah.
That's what he's saying.
Yeah, I think somebody else tried to take them down, and it didn't work out.
All right. Okay, thank you. So, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Jim.
Next item is the, we were talking about the Tall Ship Party, that's on the 16th, which is a Friday, and they have a one-day liquor license, and you have a motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the one-day wine and malt liquor license for the Nahant PT and jury club for the Tall Ship Party on June 16th, 5:00 PM to 9:30 PM, upon submitter required documentation.
Second. Okay. Discussion. I just want to, and I almost forgot to say this, we're going to probably give the plaque to the commander, am I right?
Yes, you.
Yeah.
You, I suggested you. I didn't send an email on that, it was just a discussion, I just...
No, I know, that's fine, and I appreciate that.
I just brought that up because, and then...
I appreciate that, but I just wanted to send, you know, thank Dave Lazaro, who actually did the sign, the WOLF sign, over, and he's said he would offer, I guess, to do something for this.
I'll talk to him, hopefully, I forgot to tell him.
Right. I did see a brief email about that, but the WOLF sign, you know, David's donated a couple, this a couple of times. He did the one that was above the building, and he's on this one here, and it's, he does unbelievable work, and he really should be thanked. He's just, you know, he's a quiet guy, he don't say much, but he's very good at what he does, and it's well-appreciated by the town. Okay, so, all those in favor?
Before we vote, is it possible to waive the fee for this?
We can, I mean, they're not requesting it, but we can.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. What's the fee? $25?
$25, yes.
$25. I mean, it's a tall ship.
Okay.
Is that okay? No?
No, I, you know, it's fine with me, yeah.
I mean, can I add?
You can amend it, yeah.
I meant it to waive the fee?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Next, we have the Women's Softball League Lowlands, they're May through September, and you have a motion on that.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve Women's Softball League at Lowlands Ball Field, May to September, from 5:30 PM to 8:00 PM.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We also have the Golf Course Advisory Committee here tonight to talk to us. They've sent us forth a recommendation regarding trail fees. What they're seeking to recommend to the Board is to phase out trail fees, and grandfather those who have trail fees currently or are using trail fees. And Jennifer McCarthy's here, if she, you have any questions?
Would you like to speak on it, Jim?
The Golf Committee met on Monday, and we are in full support of the vote that we made and the recommendation that we put forward to you.
So, you've got only three individuals for this fiscal year?
Currently, there's three members that have paid, and they will be grandfathered in.
How many, how many people were on the trail fees last year?
We believe six.
Six.
And so, we're leaving a window of time for those three people from last year.
Those people, they probably live in Florida.
That's our understanding, so they will be contacted to see their intentions, and if they need to be grandfathered.
I would cover them, okay?
Cover them?
Well, I would let them, you know, and then, the committee voted to disband it for 2018?
Correct.
Okay, I mean, I'd advise them and written form, all six of them.
They will all be notified appropriately.
So, that next year, they know, you know, no trails fee. So that next year they know, you know, no trail fees. Why is that, why is happening, why is that happening?
It turns out to be a big liability for...
They don't have liability insurance with their golf carts?
The individual owner would have to have the liability insurance. Plus, it also goes against town policy, I believe, of having golf carts on the streets.